Call this regular school committee meeting November 1st, 2021, 6:00 p.m. To order, Mr. Stevens, if you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none. School building needs?
Nothing at this time. Our next meeting will be November 18th, which was rescheduled.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Policy subcommittee. Mr. Horgan is not here this evening. Any questions regarding that category? Seeing none. Student support?
Nothing new to report.
Nothing to report. Any questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing none. Personnel committee. Nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, nothing as well. Mr. Mara.
Hey.
Please.
So, just a couple of things to report. Moving into, and now into, November, which we all know that the big event for November is Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving games, so everybody's getting ready and getting excited. And what's going to lead us up to that is the Thanksgiving can drive, which starts in a week from today on November 8th. So make sure to remember that and to really get excited about what is happening in the future. There's a lot of events happening later on, such as the Breakfast of the Band is happening the 21st. So congratulations to the class of 2022 in the John and Abigail Adams scholarships. To those 39, big congratulations to them, which covers part of tuition for any state school in Massachusetts. We're looking into the final week of quarter one, closes November 5th. So we hope all students to get good grades and really do that last, final push into the end of the week. Many different things. Important dates, November 11th is no school for Veterans Day. But just a few events coming up. And then also, the building heat was another issue that I know did come up, which that is now fixed. And I would say another thing is, I know was discussed last meeting, was about pool testing for winter sports, which I know the first day of winter athletics is the 29th. I would say we had a student advisory council meeting. It was last Thursday. I would say overwhelming number of people were on board with it. And I say there was very few objections to that idea of allowing pool testing for events such as winter athletics and also for school dances. So I'd say that was a very good thing, and I think a lot of people thought it was a very good compromise in general. So, yep.
Mr. Mara, that Breakfast for the Bands is at Pittsburgh High School this year?
I'm pretty sure.
It is, right.
Yes.
Great. I want to congratulate the soccer team with their huge win. Been what, over 20 years or something similar, 20 years since they made the states? Very good.
Thank you.
Jack, did you mention the can drive?
Yes, it starts next week into the 22nd for Pittsburgh, which I know we win a lot, so we're hoping to continue that streak, to usually compete over Leominster.
I just think out there, anybody out there wants to drop off some cans, can goods at Pittsburgh High School, that will really help. Thank you.
Thank you. That Breakfast for the Bands, folks, the viewing public out there this evening, please, if you can, please come and patronize that event. The band gets that money, correct? Well, they split it, I think.
Yep.
Right? Between Leominster and Pittsburgh. So certainly goes to a worthy cause, and we want to keep our band as healthy as it can be. So please, come down, spend some of your money, and get a pretty good breakfast, actually. It's very, very good, actually. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mara. Approval of the minutes for the previous special school committee meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Executive session not at this time. Communications. Yes.
Thank you. Really quick. Therapaz, therapy pets are back at Pittsburgh Public Library this coming Saturday, November 6th, 10:30 to noon. It has been a long time for us to be away. We do plan to be in the outdoors area. We welcome families to come. That is Saturday, November 6th, 10:30 to noon at Pittsburgh Public Library, the youth library. Also, an enormous turnout for the downtown trick-or-treat on Saturday. It was stupendous. The side of the street that had fewer tents counted 700 people. So I think the side with all the tents, which were Pittsburgh Public School tents beautifully decorated, it was probably like a few hundred more. So absolutely magnificent effort. Also, just since we don't have a school committee meeting before Veterans Day, just a reminder that Veterans Day is Thursday, the 11th of November, and that there will be an event at the senior center. And on Saturday, November 13th, at 1 o'clock, the Civil War reenactors, the 15th Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry joins with Stratton players. They will do a tribute to the soldiers who are interred at Forest Hill Cemetery with a special notice for those Pittsburgh soldiers who fought in the Battle of Balls Bluff. We will have readings aloud about the biographies of these soldiers by veterans and by members of the theater company. Again, this is free. We would love to see folks there, and there will be information in the Sentinel and area newspapers and the revelry. Thank you.
It's free, but if you can, please make contributions. Always welcome.
Contributions absolutely will be heading over to the Veterans Department and the Cemetery Commission. So we will definitely have a little barrel there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walsh?
Two announcements. First, I want to congratulate the Pittsburgh High School Band and Tabitha Greenlee, the director. They won a gold medal at this year's New England Scholastic Band Association competition. And as Ms. Greenlee's posted, it's the seventh consecutive season that the band has won a gold medal in competitions. That's well done. Congratulations. And the second announcement is tied into Veterans Day. There'll be a murder mystery dinner at Great Wolf Lodge on November 13th. All proceeds will support local veterans through the Friends of the Pittsburgh Veterans and the Pittsburgh Veterans Council. For more information on the dinner, you can call 978-829-1797. The cost is $55 for the dinner. And again, it's at Great Wolf Lodge, November 13th, which is a Saturday, and it begins at 6:00 p.m. I'm sure it'll be a fun time and good food. Thank you.
Great.
Just wanted to, Mr. Jokla, just to thank the administrators for sending out their newsletters to the school. Very much appreciated.
All right. Continuing forward, I believe there is someone wishing to make public comment.
We'll just take a moment for it to pop up.
Hello, welcome, Susan Thor.
Hi. Yep. Can I start?
Can you start?
Yes. You can start.
Oh, all right. Hi. My name is Susan Thor. I'm a mother and graduate of Pittsburgh High and lifelong resident of Pittsburgh. I have two kids in Pittsburgh Public Schools right now, and one who has already graduated. I'd like to comment on the grant from the Bar Foundation for Driving Towards Diversity in the Educated Workforce. I'd like to start with a quote from God of the Machine by Isabel Patterson. "Most of the harm in the world is done by good people and not by accident, lapse, or omission. It is the result of their deliberate actions, long persevered in, which they hold to be motivated by high ideals towards virtuous ends." On Friday, I spoke with superintendent and asked him more details about the Bar Foundation grant. It is my understanding that the grant is for an analysis or diagnostic on how the school can diversify its staff. An equity appraisal was already done last November, so I asked why there was such an emphasis on race in our public schools and if there had been many complaints. He said there were several complaints. I didn't ask for specifics.
Excuse me, could you ask her that we're having trouble hearing? I'm having trouble hearing.
I'm having trouble understanding.
Susan, can you just speak loud and clear? We're just having a little trouble hearing you.
Slow down a bit.
Okay.
Slow down maybe a little bit.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay? Might be my microphone.
Yes, better.
Okay, great. Should I start from the beginning?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. Like I said, I'm a mother and graduate of Pittsburgh High and lifelong resident of Pittsburgh. I have two kids in the Pittsburgh Public Schools right now, and one who has already graduated. I'd like to comment on the grant from the Bar Foundation for Driving Towards Diversity in the Educated Workforce. I'd like to start with a quote from God of the Machine by Isabel Patterson. "Most of the harm in the world is done by good people and not by accident, lapse, or omission. It is the result of their deliberate actions, long persevered in, which they hold to be motivated by high ideals towards virtuous ends." On Friday, I spoke with superintendent and asked him about more details on the Bar Foundation grant. It is my understanding, from what he said, that it's an analysis or diagnostic on how the school can diversify its staff. An equity appraisal was done last November, so I asked why there was such an emphasis on race in our public schools and if there had been many recent complaints. He said there were several complaints. I didn't ask for specifics. So from several complaints, the school committee is now adding another burden on all of our schools. It may even be shifting resources and energy from academics and instruction to making policies for the sake of diversity, equity, and inclusion at a time when MCAS scores are so low. The equity appraisal was done by Dr. Akuma Nodiki from Inclusivity Education, inclusivityed.com. She believes in critical race theory, and I know this because she is offering a free 15-minute lesson on CRT at her website. The appraisal doesn't give real solutions that will help our present-day students to learn. Instead, Dr. Nodiki is suggesting that in order to reach your goal of equity and inclusion, you need to change what you're teaching, since having a diverse workforce isn't necessarily going to change anything. Who set this goal of equity and inclusion? And when will we reach it? Also, according to the doctor, black perfectionism, writing things down, and power hoarding are tenants of whiteness. Also, on the FPS website, under the video description of equity appraisal, it says, and I'm paraphrasing, that Dr. Nodiki used originally designed frameworks that centers the needs of black and brown people, predominantly those from underserved communities. The focus of her research is to help only two kinds of people, black and brown. In your quest to be inclusive and make everyone feel a sense of belonging, you are actually alienating people. And now you're going to try to do again with the Bar Foundation grant. You will be bringing in another person who may be like Dr. Akuma Nodiki, who believes in and teaches CRT to analyze our schools. The Bar Foundation grant offers no benefits, and it's harmful because it welcomes racism. It's just another way for you to make yourselves feel like you are doing something for the, quote-unquote, disadvantaged minorities. Please stop trying to implement race-based policies in the public schools and stop forcing kids down this path. We're all made in the image of God. Thank you.
Do we make comment? Do we make comment on her speech? Or talk to her?
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Are you there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do we make comment on her, what she says?
No.
Speak to her? No?
No, not at this time. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have two school improvement plans. With us first will be Alexis Curry of Goodrich Academy. Jeremy Roach will be joining us to present on Pittsburgh High School about 6:30. Ms. Curry is asked to go first, so we are granting her request here. She has to return back to school.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good to see you.
And I will also thank you, or ask your forgiveness in my departing after I speak, only because the school is still in session and I'm headed back there. So at the sake of looking rude, I am going to leave when I'm done, but thank you for your time already. All right, so I'm here to report on the Goodrich Academy School Improvement Plan. And I know you all have that document already, and I know I've had probably time to look it over and digest it, and I'm more than happy to take any questions. What I decided to do was just try to glean from that what I thought would be most important and most relevant to an ongoing conversation, and I put some slides up about that, so we're going to talk about that. So at present, I'll preface this slide by explaining that mid-pandemic, we had some concerns at Goodrich for the first time ever, at least in my time, about numbers of referrals. And I think that was primarily a result of the fact that, at the time, we had 31 sending districts. But at a time of online learning, I don't think people saw the merit or the differences in what they might gain from going to an alternative setting. I will say that the measures we employed at that alternative setting during the pandemic, even online, were very different. But at any rate, we were beginning to get concerned about the number of referrals and kids coming of past years to them. So I'm proud to report that the number of, when the slide was made, it was 161. Our typical number is about 185 at this time in the school year. We are now at 189. And so this has changed from, I apologize for the change already, but we're at 189. And we have 89 out-of-district students now, so we're approaching right where we are. We typically land around 185, with half of those students being school choice. So we're seeing our numbers return, and in fact, over the past two weeks, even though we're not yet starting a new semester, we've had enrollment meetings. We have a 45-minute enrollment meeting, half hour to 45 minutes, with every student we enroll, so we can get to know their needs and they can get to know what we have to offer, and we can see how to best suit them. And we've had six to seven meetings per day for the last three weeks consistently. So the number is back, and the enrollments are high, and we're very happy with that number. At the time of this slide, the sending districts had gone from 31, which is typical. We usually land between 29 and 30 sending towns. It had gone down to 19, and is now back up to around 23. Number of special education students in the building, 46. Number of ELL students, 16. And the differential, if you look at the numbers, they don't add up, are because we have 12 special needs students who are placed at Pittsburgh State College that are under our rules but not within our walls. So that's the difference.
Could you explain a little bit about that?
You know, I wish I could explain more, to be honest with you, Mr. Stevens. All I know is that they're, I think they're pre-vocational students that do some work post-high school at Pittsburgh State University in a program that is there. And I just know for whatever reason, they need to be on someone's rules, so they land on ours. But there's always, when I say, you know, in district and out of district, I just noted that the numbers don't add up to the 161. So I'm just letting you know from Pittsburgh State to know where that differential lies. So that's our breakdown right now. All right, so highlights since COVID. Our MCAS scores, you'll see as we go forward, have gotten markedly better. We feel that that's great. The pandemic was a big worry, and the learning loss and so on. So far, the scores have been good. We have a brand-new, first-time-ever at Goodrich Academy, an academic interventionist hired under Title I funds, which has been extremely helpful in reaching out to the students that we're not been able to reach. So we're very happy about that. After-hours tutorial is a program that, last year, there was a, there's probably going to be another slide of this, so I won't say too much, except that there was previously a grant that Goodrich applies for. Every year, I apply for, and we typically get, which is for internships and helping students to establish internships. But mid-pandemic, they allowed us some flexibility with that grant, because obviously, people weren't taking interns. And we turned it at Goodrich into what was called After Hours Tutorial, which, again, the next slide will tell you more about. But in essence, what we did was our teachers were willing to come in during the pandemic because our kids were not able to learn from online and at home. And that grant allowed us to pay them for morning services before the building would open, and nights and weekends when school was not in session, any hour beyond school hours. And we'll tell you more about, and that was a huge success. So we got a grant for $35,000 that allowed us to do that. Summer school is going to come, the numbers, but we did have a small summer school for the first time to help those kids that had been suffering credit-wise in the pandemic. And the number of graduates in 2021 was 105, which is about 25 off from what we typically are. But we did get to 105. One of the things that, it says former graduates who came back, nine total. So last year, when we were mid-pandemic and learning online, every year, I try to go back after the kids who landed with a certificate of attainment. We always have two or three, and that's always bothersome to me. Those students typically go out and go to work, and so they never are able to come back and complete those tests and successfully pass them. And later, I'll hear from them several more years later down the road, that's really hindering their ability to go on and make any progress in life. So last year, because we were teaching online, I put forth an initiative to reach out to kids going back from the class of 2014 to present, all students who had not passed the MCAS, and welcomed them to join us on online learning, because our online sessions were taped and could be heard at another time. So we invited nine students, reached out to us, and said they would avail themselves of that service. One from 2014, three from 17, one from 18, and four from 19. All took part in our online learning and came back and took the MCAS live last year and passed it. So we were very proud that we were able to get nine students forward. So those were our highlights. So After Hours Tutorial, when we proposed it to the kids at the time of progress notes, we had 76 identified seniors who were failing out of our 110, which was extremely disturbing to us. And we weren't able to reach them because we weren't in building with them, and we just could not coach them the way we typically did. 56 of those students, 76 enrolled in the After Hours Tutorial. 56 availed themselves of the private tutoring services with our teachers. And there's a breakdown, sophomores, juniors, freshmen. The total hours teachers tutored students from the class of 2021 was 445.75 hours logged. And all 56 seniors who availed themselves of the service did pass and graduate. So we were very proud of that. We don't think they would have made it without that program. And we have just, last week, I wrote the grant again, and they are allowing that flexibility again. So we're hoping to again seek After Hours Tutorial services for the kids that are still pretty skeptical and have poor attendance and otherwise, kind of post-pandemic, so we'll be using that as well. MCAS data, this is just a spread of the 2019, 20, and 21 MCAS data. Just a couple of things about this. We, at Goodrich, we're trying to do more and more with our data. It doesn't sing the way that other people's does, and we intend to work on that, but this is what we have. And as you can see, we were very, we saw the math, November 19 math number, being 12 failures out of 25 students who took the test. Needless to say, that was very disconcerting to us. So we did two things at Goodrich to respond to that. One was, we started having the special education teachers and/or support staff co-teach the lowest-level math classes in the building, so that we put two people in the classroom to see if we could get around more and service them more. And the second thing that I attempted to do to respond to this was, we found that the kids that were failing were kids that had either come up and had half an eighth grade, missed all of eighth grade, barely passed eighth grade, or in a placement at grade eight. And what we found from discussing with the teachers and such was that they simply weren't ready for algebra. We're in a bind because we're a high school. We have to teach what the state wants us to teach. But we had these kids that really were not ready to go there. So what we did was we began offering what was called academic support math as an elective, not as a math credit. So students actually take two additional classes in math, and it is pre-algebra, if you will, getting them ready so they can be high school-ready for math. And we started that last year, and the kids seemed to find it very helpful. And our numbers this year, you know, were down to 1 out of 13 that failed. So I'm not saying it's a direct result, but I know from talking to the kids and seeing it in action, those two initiatives, the co-teaching and the academic support math, are helping.
Quick question on that participation. Can you explain the numbers, you know, 25 slash 27?
Yes, that's the number of students who are expected to take the test and the number who took it.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason we chart that participation is because at Goodrich, that's the only category we always have a problem in, because you have such a small number of kids taking the test. If two are absent, you violate the 10% that has to attend. And in this year's, we are again, one shy, but one had already dropped out of school, so that will catch itself in the next round. But that's why we chart that. That's how many took it out of how many were supposed to arrive and take it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's up?
Yeah?
Can I ask?
Oh, sure.
When a student doesn't pass from Goodrich, right, MCAS, like how, what is the average amount of time a student is at Goodrich? Like for years?
Students at Goodrich, I'll be honest with you, it traditionally was probably one to two years, maximum. We are seeing, we have people asking us to come to Goodrich younger and younger. We used to primarily be a junior, senior school, and now we're getting a lot of sophomores and freshmen, which is meaning that we're, you know, we have to change our standards around how many classes to take and such. But typically, that's, I had made a chart one year about our MCAS scores, because I had looked at them, and I felt like it didn't make us look good. And I charted actually how many came with not only major deficits, but how many were with us. And like, you'll find kids on our list for MCAS that have failed that come to us, but they're a student needing two classes. So I come to Goodrich, and I need a math, I mean, a history of science, and an English to graduate. I never even take math at Goodrich Academy. But their MCAS score is still reflected in ours. So many of them do not get the base of their math courses with us. But again, we're still responsible for them, so we're trying to employ some strategies to help them fill those gaps.
What percentage would you say just aren't able to actually graduate because of MCAS?
I'm going to say we usually have two to three a year. That's about our average, two, three, maybe four. And typically, they are special education, ELL, a combination of factors, missed a considerable amount of school, out for many years. Usually, the vast majority of kids do get through if we use the right tutorial system and we work with them. But several have to take it more than once. I'd say 25% of our kids have to take it twice before they pass.
And do some just graduate with a certificate of attendance?
Yes. In fact, as you saw, we had like, since 2015, we had, I think it was 16 kids who had graduated with certificate attainment. And that's why we're going back now, trying to find some ways to offer them a way to do it online or privately, now that we have Google Classroom. I think that's going to help a lot with that, because it does afford them the ability to come back and get some remediation before they take it again. But you make a good point, because very often, we have them for a very brief period of time. And then, and sometimes, they don't even take a math.
Could I just ask one follow-up, too? Do you know if, how much that impacts them? Like, are most of the kids already kind of employed or they're?
It impacts them greatly. You know, that's, I don't have a problem with the measure of an MCAS. I think we do need a standard by which we all operate. But at the same time, I think it's a high stakes for these kids. I have kids, like I said, those kids that came from all the way back to 2014. That kid is still trying to go to community college. She came here from Springfield to pick up her diploma when she passed. So it does impact them a great deal.
So you can't go to some school like that with just a certificate of attendance?
It's a big problem. All right, summer school data. I will say right out front, the numbers here look dismal in terms of the bottom passing. That was how many passed each subject area in the course of the summer. Since that time, almost every one of those is now up to 90%. We are still working with those summer school students. They did not finish in the regularly allotted time, and our teachers were kind enough to take that on and are still working with them some nights, some weekends, and we're getting them all through. But in total, I think we had about 50 kids that have attained credit through the summer. We've never done summer school there before, but the grant allowed us to continue that. After-hours tutorial money's right through August 31st. So we let about 50 kids participate, and it looks like about five will not finish, regardless of what we do. But the rest should all pass. All right, Goodrich Academy students, this is as a group of teachers. We, in our student assistance teams every year, every week, we meet to talk about students and what we think Goodrich students need and how they're doing as they interface with the world. And this is just a simple list of what the teachers at Goodrich felt they wanted you to know or the school improvement plan, what we would like our students to be when they depart Goodrich Academy. So diverse thinker, valued friend, good neighbor, empathetic listener, team player, self-advocate, effective communicator, lifelong learner, and productive citizen.
I love that list. That's a great list.
Try to tell them what we're looking for. We try to set the expect, this is what we hope you will be. And anytime we do that for students, we do it for ourselves as well. So the next slide tells you, these are the things that our teachers this year have identified as what we think make us a successful team in working with students at Goodrich. We need structure, versatility, empathy, authentivism, growth mindsets, and wholefulness. And that's what we try to bring. That's kind of what we remind each other, that's posted all over our walls and what we try to bring to the table each day. All right, so noteworthy thus far, our welcome All right, so noteworthy thus far, our Welcome Back to School event. We had food trucks and bingo games, as we always do at Goodrich, we eat. And we had over 200 parents come out and join us on that, on a great evening to welcome them all back to school. They want to know when our next event is. I don't know if they think we could do this all the time, but we really had a great time. They were real happy about it. Everybody enjoyed themselves. And I think it really set the tone for the year. And it was, we were so happy to be afforded the opportunity to welcome them and because it started the year off with a bang. The development of the Academic Support Math courses, those are the courses that, as I told you, don't count for math credit because they're pre-algebra courses, but they do count for an elective credit. That's been very helpful. The co-teaching has been wonderful. Advisories, when we were afforded the opportunity to be working from home, it was our policy that we called each student's home every single week because teachers were not in the classroom every day, teaching every period. So they had the time to call them. And every student received a call at their home for progress, assistance, and so on. And we separated the students out via advisories. We felt like that was a critical part of our success during the pandemic. And when we came back, we felt we really wanted to have advisories again. So this year, we have divvied up the students and we do have advisories so that we can have, it is now bi-weekly, but a call to the parents on a regular basis to let them know how their student's doing, to see how they feel about attending Goodrich and how we can do anything we do better. School council, we have our first student on it. Cody Mosher, a student from last year, is returning. And we did expand the committee by two. We have a very, very strong school council at Goodrich. They are parents of graduates, most of them, going back. Some of them have been on it eight to 10 years. They show up constantly. They're eight to 10 strong, and they're a wonderful group. We're very happy to expand that. Personalized learning plans, as I said, we're trying to increase the amount of data that we use at Goodrich and to have more information so we can share with all of you more about what we do with students. We have the Personalized Learning Plan, which is an inventory of every student when they come in, their social, emotional issues, their academic issues, their past issues so that a teacher can get a fingertip access to what that student brings to the table and what their needs are. So those have been very helpful. And the Workforce Employment Fair, we're back to work. And we're still, I think you might know this, but for the last three, three years running, we've had the highest employment rate of any school in the state of Massachusetts and received that award. And we are, once again, have a lot of working kids and working really hard. And so the number of students working right now is approaching what it was last year. And that was, last year, we had well, well over three-quarters of our students working 35 hours a week or more. So we're hoping to get back to that. Social, emotional learning, just because it's always been, we were talking to, had some speakers talk to us about social, emotional learning. And once in a while, I get sarcastic. Anyone who knows me knows that. And I said, well, welcome to the table. Glad you could come. We've been doing social, emotional learning for a couple of decades now. But in all honesty, we can always get better, just like everyone else. And this is what we pride ourselves on for social, emotional learning. We have, I don't know if people know this about Goodrich, but this has been ongoing. But every night, when I go back tonight, teachers meet at 7:35. We'll go over every kid that's absent and any kid that is failing in any subject. And nightly calls are made to the homes of every absent student. Parents' Nights, we used to have them once a year. And we thought that in light of social, emotional learning and the success we've had with bringing the parents in, we will have one every semester. So our next one will be the 13th of next month. Club Doing Something Right is, every teacher is asked to make a call home to one student in the class about a student that is just doing well. And we offer them a snack, from the snack bar we don't have. So they, we're just trying to also give parents, these are parents that have had negative calls for years and years and years and years. So we're trying to focus on not only dealing with the difficult students in our building and getting them to do a better job, but also in recognizing those that are just doing the right thing all the time. Student Council expansion, we, again, our student council has expanded. I think many of you know, we're trying to get, re-up our Book Buddies program where several kids from Goodrich, every Friday, go over and read to students at Southeast School and help the teachers there to work with the students there. So that's going, we're just getting that up and running again. Zero tolerance, we promote zero tolerance because I say to every parent at every enrollment meeting, I would like you to survey the schools in the state. And if you would like to, feel free to expand that to the country and tell me how many schools, and I'm going to knock on wood because this is dangerous, but haven't had a fight in their building in 16 years. Not one. We attribute that to the culture and we attribute that to zero tolerance. Students who enroll at Goodrich Academy are made very aware that any fight, any verbal or physical aggression toward a number, another member of our community on social media or in person, they go back to whatever setting in school they came from. We do not tolerate it. We have a lot of anxiety kids, a lot of depressed kids, a lot of kids with a lot of issues, and they don't need fights in the hallway. So we're very proud of our zero tolerance. And we think it goes a long way to make kids feel safe. And especially when they're coming from so many out-of-district communities, when you're bringing kids in from 20, 30 towns, those, those families are often reassured to hear that there is, there's no instance of bullying and no fights in our community for many, many years. And the Health Fair will be this January, where we partner with Mount Waukesha Community College, I mean, I'm sorry, with, yeah, Mount Waukesha Community College to bring in the Health Fair. And we are also having a College Fair coming up in February.
Do you have a date for that?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a date for the January Health Fair?
I don't, I don't know why we had January, the nurse put January, and I don't know the date, but I can, I can send it to you, so.
Okay, yeah, and I'll follow back.
Yeah, they always come, they come, it's a great, it's a great event. So I'll send you the date.
Yep.
Thank you. College Career Readiness, every student in our building now does what's called a Senior Portfolio, where they come in and look at colleges. We fill out the financial aid forms with them. We help them look at opportunities for postgraduate studies, both in college, technical schools, the military, and otherwise. So we've really stepped up our game in trying to make sure more of our kids go to college. Naviance, we use a lot of interest, career interest inventories. We have not done this yet. It is our goal that every student will fill one out this year. Don't know that that will come to fruition, but we're certainly going to give it a try. As I said, the College Fair, I'm sorry, I said, February is December 19th is our College Fair. Several two- and four-year colleges will come to the schools and our school. And our kids will go through and see what they can do. And College Career Readiness, obviously, we have standards-based curriculum that we stick to. And when we do need to do remediation, as I told you, we find other ways and venue, other ways and vehicles to get, to fill those gaps. Improvement still needed. After Hours Tutorial Grant, we're just hoping we get it. It was submitted on the 29th of October. If we do get it, that will be used for the same purpose, to outreach to the students that we're not able to reach. Their phones are disconnected, or we just can't get to them. They're not answering our phones. And the After Hours Tutorial Grant will allow them to come in. It's mostly working students, those that work too many hours, just can't find time to come in for makeup and extra help. Increased walkthroughs, sometimes it's easy to get complacent when you've had the same eight teachers for a decade and a half. So I've made a commitment to increase walkthroughs. And Central Office will be coming through for some walkthroughs. So we're hoping that's an improvement we will do. Our website is, not very good. And it's not controlled by us somehow. It goes through someone else. And I am not the most technologically astute person to make a website. I put that right on the table. But we do have two staff who are. And it is my goal to make sure that that website is improved and sells us the way it should. Family Home Liaison, thank you to Central Office staff. We have just hired our first family home liaison. He'll be starting on the 17th of this month. And we are related to have somebody go out into the homes. We just, it's okay to call and it's okay to chase, but we really do need someone that's not teaching all day or running the school all day to go out into these homes and run family meetings and find out what's stopping these kids from getting into school, what are the obstacles in their way. And we think we've hired the right person, so we look forward to that. Permanent substitute, we finally have three applicants, and we're going to have three interviews. So we're really excited about that. We've been without a substitute. And it's only one person, but when you only have one, it's difficult. Improved connectivity, our building, everyone knows has some problems with, you know, the internet. Our technical department does everything they can to help us. It's just a tough building. So we're working with, with Central Office to try to improve that. One-on-one computers, we do have a computer for everybody in the building. But, and in fairness to our technical department, they haven't even heard this yet. This is an improvement that I see on my to-do list now. What happens is we have computers, but we don't allow our students to take them out of the building. So we have a computer for every person who's there. But what we run into is that some kids need work at home. They need remediation, they need to fill those gaps, they need to do makeup work. And they're not allowed out of the building. So it's my goal to establish with the technical department a way for us to have a certain amount of those allotted that can go home because our students don't have access to one at home. So that, that's a goal, but again, we haven't even--
You don't have enough, you don't have enough computers?
No, we have enough computers for every student in the building, in our building. But they don't, they're not, it's not like any other school where they're assigned to the student and they take them home. They stay at Goodrich. And I was as much in favor of that as everyone else, for a lot of reasons. When you have kids, sometimes only for one semester, and the computer's gone, it doesn't come back, you lose a host of computers. So I, I never asked for anything different. So it's not like they wouldn't give it to me. We do have one for everyone. I didn't think it was a good idea for them to go out either. But we are running into a situation where there are kids that need them at home. And now the ones we have in the building are not allowed out of the building. So my goal is to establish a bank of them somewhere that Goodrich students can take and use at home. And again, I intend to forward that with the technical depart, with Department of Technology and see what we can do about that. ELL supports, like every school, we have an increased number of ELL students coming to our doors. We do not have an ELL teacher at Goodrich. And we're in that, it's an odd bind because you only have, most of those students are housed at Pittsburgh High, and they do an amazing job. They're just in between the ones that are kind of flapping out, but they're not quite completely English-speaking yet. And we only have about nine of them. And I've been asked if we want an ELL teacher before. It's not that I've been denied one, but it's an odd thing because you only have about 12 of them, and they're spread over three different time blocks. So you'd literally be bringing a teacher in to teach two to three students. So, but we are getting to that place, and that's why I put it on the list, where at some point, as the number of ELL students increases, we're a one-room schoolhouse. We can do grades nine through 12 in one room, and that's hard enough. But to add ELL and sped and learning differences, it just gets tough. So it's something, it's just something I'm putting out there for food for thought. And the last is increased data analysis and use. And that's all on us, starting with me and going down. We fly around, we do everything we can. We have a small skeleton staff. And we help kids all day long, but we don't necessarily do the best job in keeping track of what we do with those students. So it's my intention and our intention as a school, when it's a world of data out there, to get better at data and be able to show in numbers what we do for kids a lot better. And that's it.
Can I ask, on that slide where you said, you know, you got pretty much everybody through except five, are those five ELL students?
Most of the students, I have a, I have a chart I could actually send that I created, but most of them are a combination. They're not just ELL students, usually ELL and special education with significant learning differences that have been out of school a while. I mean, some of them were, I was charting them for my own purposes to say, who's not passing this MCAS? And it would be like a kid that failed five consistent math classes in three schools, was out for two years, is ELL and also special ed, and we had him for two semesters. So it's really hard, the ones that don't pass, we just haven't had the time with them. I have not seen a student in the past several years that ever came from us and was with us like two years or more that got three or four math classes from us and then didn't pass. So it is a combination, but it can be, it can be tough. Our numbers, our numbers sometimes reflect low, and I don't love it, but that's just basically what we have. But we try to, we're going to, we're going to try to continue to use online learning to see if we can make sure that everyone gets through at some point. I think that we did this one.
Yep, we're all set.
Yep, we're all done. I thank you all very much.
Any questions from anyone?
Good job.
All right, thank you. Everyone have a great night.
Thank you, Alexis. Thank you, Alexis. To wrap up High School Night, School Improvement Plan, we have Pittsburgh High School Principal Jeremy Roach here to present.
How we doing, everybody?
Good, how are you?
Good, Jeremy.
We'll be queuing up a presentation here.
Oh, yes.
There we go.
So, yeah, as we started, just want to point out some positives. So, so I want to congratulate the band. They earned a gold medal this weekend at the New England School Band Association Competition in Reading, which is awesome. Tapht Greenlee's best band director in the state, and the team always do amazing work there. We have a small but mighty band every year, and it's really impressive.
But it's growing, Mr. Roach, it's growing.
Yeah, that's true. It is a little bit bigger, which is, which is great. And they're well-equipped. They have amazing uniforms and instruments. Thank you, everybody here. We also learned about the football team was notified today that they will play Westfield High School on Friday in the state playoff tournament. They did make the top 16 in the state in Division III. So that's exciting. We'll play at Westfield at 7:00 PM. And then boys soccer, we'll find about, find out about their draw as well because they also made it into the state tournament. And then we recognized our 39 Adam Scholar recipients this past Friday and really promoted to a lot of the seniors to take the November retest because so many of the seniors, they don't have to pass MCAS to graduate this year, class 2022. But there were many kids that if they did not take it, they still can to earn the Adam Scholarship. So we really tried to push that out to the kids.
What's the date on that for retake?
The retakes start on the 8th, and they run through. So English, I believe, is, I don't know, it's 8th and 9th, and then I think it's the 11th or something. I, I put it out to the students this week. I get the two, the math and the English a little backwards, but I'll find that out. But I know it's next week and then early the following week for the two retests for English and math. So, yeah, to be a good opportunity for kids that didn't take it last year. So anyway, I think we can, we can start with the slides. And I wanted to start out, just, it's always interesting to do a quick snapshot on--
It's kind of stinking, hold on.
Okay, that's fine. On enrollment, we're actually a little bit above 1,300. I think that's, that'll be our October enrollment capture is, is a little bit above 1,300, which is the first time since I've been there. Because when I started, if we just go back a decade to the 2011-12 school year, we were at a 1,083. And you can see how the demographic enrollment was distributed in 2011-12. If you move forward, John, you can see the most recent one that's official had us at a high 1,200, which I think is great, you know? And I point that out because we were a little bit above 1,300.[1613.34] And I point that out because we were a little bit above 1,300. It should be for the 21-2022 school year, which I think should be updated within maybe a couple of weeks, you know? We, we did report that recently. So you can see the enrollment has gone up a couple hundred, which to me is an indication of confidence in the school and certainly a growing school district. You know, that, that district number was higher than the previous slide as well by about 150 or so. So, so that's really good news. And then you can see just the, the change in the demographic for this, for the Pittsburgh High School is significant, you know? There's some, some changes. I think Alexis was just talking about that a little bit as well with respect to, to Goodrich Academy. So we'll have that finalized most likely. I would say we'll get the information from Department of Ed within the next month, if not a little bit sooner. But it's always interesting to see that and to see how the shifts have happened, you know, just in 10 years, it's fairly dramatic. As we look at, I think, the next slide, it's a quick review on MCAS. And we know that our MCAS results were not, they didn't count necessarily, but they certainly are important in the sense of looking at how that, what the results were as, as it pertains to a year that was, was unlike any other. You know, so what you see there is three school years, the 2019 school year, 2020, there was no MCAS, and then, which is the X's, and then 2021, the results for the MCAS for the junior classes, so this would be the class of 2023. You can see the comparison there by our demographic groups that, that were quantified for, which is most of them. And it's interesting with English that despite the fact we didn't return to in-person school until March, and that was, many students did not still, then again, more permanently in April, we did have some interesting results that showed some positive improvement and achievement. And actually, the student growth percentage went up in, in English this past year. When we compare to the state, however, we still have a lot of work to do, you know, to get to where the state average is, and certainly that's our goal. But it was, but it was interesting to look at that and to see that, you know, in the English domain, which might have been a little bit easier in the sense of much of the online learning was reading something, writing a response, you know, in all of the classes, especially up until March and April where it was, where it was virtual. There were a lot of different tools that we utilized that did that. So, so that was, so there was some positive results there. If we move over to math, it was not as, as, as positive. And, and I think, again, math is so content-specific, especially as we get into those, you know, Algebra I, geometry, even Algebra II concepts that are captured in, in the MCAS test, you know, we didn't do as well. And, and it's not a huge surprise. I do believe we'll have a great bounce-back year. The math department is, is working really hard and doing a lot of innovative techniques and strategies that, that's already taken hold. But again, some of these results that we saw, I think, and the growth percentage went down as well because the math, the math team for us had, had been the higher growth percentage typically, you know, of, of between English and math. And so it, it went down from, from the mid-40s to 30. Not a huge surprise. There were a lot of schools that were in that similar boat, I think, similar situation. But we expect a big bounce-back year this, this year. As we shift over to the other big accountability areas for Pittsburgh High School, and we haven't had the 2021 data captured, what I would say is it, it should be very strong again. I don't know if it will be that strong. I mean, the, the previous year in 2019 was the first year we had ever achieved 90%, you know, 90%. I mean, we had worked really hard to get to 90%. And then 2020, we skyrocketed up to 96.7, which was really astounding in a positive way. It was the true kind of COVID class, you know, that, that class that graduated in the midst of that three-month period. We didn't do our graduation until, I want to say it was the last weekend in July. I know, I know we have a great picture from that one. It's, it's on my bulletin board. But the, the grad rate and then the dropout rate, I think, you know, had, we typically are about 1% range, you know, in the dropout rate, which constitutes, you know, 15 or so students, 12 to 15 range is what that 1.2% is. We're always disappointed in anything above 0.0, really. You know, again, similar to what Alexis was talking about before. But, you know, I think as we look at our grad rate, which should be in the 90s again, and our dropout rate should be very low again, we just keep emphasizing that and providing every opportunity. We are fortunate to have a great school system that has the vision of having a Goodrich Academy as part of the school system for sure. You know, that benefits all students in Pittsburgh and certainly many stu, many districts for, for Goodrich. But, but I think we do, we will see a strong result again for the class 2021 when those, when that data is revealed. And that one comes out a little bit later.
So Jeremy, on the four-year graduation rate, graduation rate, is, is that a number, students who come to Pittsburgh High as a freshman and stay there all four years and graduate?
So, so that calculation is based on, there's, there's certainly that. It's the original cohort, you know, and then what is graduated. But it's also students you pick up along the way, which is quite a few. And then at the end, if they were ever calculated, so when a student starts the first day of their freshman year, they are set for four years later for that, for that graduating year. So any student that transfers from Pittsburgh High to another high school will be part of that high school's graduating class and expected to graduate in 2020, in the, in the case of what we're looking at here. So we pick up a lot and a lot move. So, so it's not exactly that cohort because many of them do move to other schools, some transition to Goodrich, some move to different cities, some move out of state, some move to different countries. So, so when the state calculates the four-year grad rate, it's any students that you had that should graduate in 2020 that year. There's a couple of different graduation rates. There's a four-year adjusted, that kind of takes a little bit longer period of time to, to, to take a snapshot on it. And then there's a five-year and a five-year adjusted as well. This one is just who graduated by the end of August, really, you know, by, by really the end of, by, by the end of summer school. In that particular group that you had, whether they started with you or came to you, but they were calculated as you were supposed to graduate in 2020 because your first day of freshman year was ever four years prior. Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It, it is, and there are three other ones too, but this is the main one that is used for the accountability for the school, you know, for, for high schools. So that's the one. And the others are super important as well, and we've had some amazing results there. Again, you know, there's lots of different work and strategies and efforts that go into that and having the structure, I think, of, of Goodrich is certainly a, a great thing for, for the students in, in the city of Pittsburgh. So the other thing we're spending a lot of time looking at right now is the attendance rate, and it's, it's a struggle. I mean, we had really had some great results over sort of a six-year period of time and working hard on that. You know, of course, the COVID year made it more difficult. We're still excited that we're above 90%. Now that all students are in, you know, we are seeing some, some challenges with that. And, and, you know, I'll, when I get into the goals in a minute, you know, I'll talk a little bit about how, how we're going to try to make sure we're at least at 90% by the end of the year. But, but again, I think, you know, we will get back to the 92.1. It just might take us a little bit of time as we, as we kind of get back into the expectation that you're in school every day with caveats of however, if you have the sniffles, stay home, you know? And if there's another thing, you gotta stay home for 10 days. And I mean, so there's some challenges that we're, every school is facing right now and that's why it's one of our major school-wide goals. If we look at the next slide, it really is our, it is our mission, it's our, it's our focus. Every goal that, that we set in terms of departmental teams revolves around, you know, our instructional focus, the, the major emphasis of, of sort of what we expect for every student at Pittsburgh High School in the time that they graduate, in addition to, as I said, our SMART goals. So the SMART E is kind of every student in every class, you know, in every subject area, every teacher, you know, will focus around that one. You know, it's critical thinking, it's effective communication and how are we capturing that? And the teachers are working really hard around that. And then our straightforward kind of message that we have every morning, you know, on the intercom and different ways that we communicate it is that one at the bottom there. We just repeat it, repeat it, repeat it, repeat it. And, you know, we hope that students have that one ingrained, kind of seared into their minds. The next two slides get into the detail, I think, of how we're setting up our instructional goals. You can, you can see those there. So, so ultimately, again, it, it revolves around, we know that the two key skills that a student has to have is they, they have to be effective communicators and they really need to be able to demonstrate critical thinking in a lot of different ways. It's wide in the sense of every class can apply that in some way or other. So the way that we're setting that up this year is we are doing much better work around capturing data in a, in a quick, timely manner with, with formative assessments, meaning assessments that are happening in the classroom. We're not waiting for MCAS and then saying, okay, well, we'll see what happens next year. It'll be maybe a quiz. It might be something that's a little bit more manageable from the perspective of a short constructed paragraph, you know, an essay that's, that's shorter. It could be something that is an electronic package like Galileo, you know, where we're using that in science. So there's lots of different ways that that's happening, but all departments are doing that and, and, and we've already done some cycles, which is great. This was always something we talked about doing, but couldn't figure out how to do exactly at the high school level, you know, with departments that can get up to almost 20 people and are all teaching different things. So, so it's pretty exciting and I think the more timely information about how students are doing is really critical to, to, you know, being able to meet that larger goal. So there's different ways that that's happening. You can kind of see that citing evidence is one I just want to point out, that, that's, that's an instructional and learning focus as part of our school-wide instructional goal that we're expecting all students demonstrate. We picked that one because in, in some of our writing data, we saw kids struggled with that. They could maybe find some evidence and stick it in there, but it didn't necessarily make sense really, or it wasn't elaborated on with detail. So, so when we looked at evidence and elaboration, one of the writing standards, we knew, okay, that's, that's one of our lowest, so let's hit that. And citing evidence is one that we've been working on really since going back to last year, but, but in earnest this year. We have been working with, and a lot of this comes with our collaboration with Carrie Purcell from Focus Schools, who embeds with our instructional leadership team. She works with departments, she works with me and, and the administrative team really effectively and has great ideas, you know? And then the other thing we do is, is, you know, we use a lot of our, of our expertise within the building. We have 100-plus teachers, we have a number of other folks, and there are experts that we want to tap into. So the EdCamp model is really just the idea of, you know, Jim is an expert in citing evidence. Let's get Jim to do a session at the next faculty meeting or at the next professional learning circle or our, or instructional leadership team meeting. So, so the teachers have done that, have been doing that for a couple of years now, but we're making it a little bit more formal. And I think the power of that is, is evident in terms of, you know, the, the various points of expertise that the, the staff have. And then we are expanding our coaches role, so we kind of turned that into a humanities coach and a STEM coach so that a number of other departments are, are supported by our great coaches. And I think already that's having a big impact in, in social studies and science and tech in particular. I think we can look at the next goal, which is related to, you know, all other things, sort of non-academic in the sense of, you know, attendance is so critical and that sense of belonging, you know, and building the culture. This year, the, the thing we keep saying is this is rebuilding structures and relationships year in a lot of ways. And so, so our emphasis around that, you know, is through our advisory as well, which we have every other week. You know, it's the attendance focus, it's really kind of some structures in there, but it's also continuing to engage students in those positive kind of opportunities and activities. Student Advisory Council, we had about 30 students at the one the other day, and John Joseph Martarosi, and the Social Studies History Director was at it and, and, you know, it was great to have him participate in. It's School Improvement Council, which we did our first one in person, you know, back to pizza, which was great. And Superintendent Jokel was there presenting about the strategic plan and, you know, so it's lots of ways to get kids involved. Our esports team is having a blast and that's exploding and just baking club had 40 kids. I mean, you know, so kids want to do it and we got to bring them back into these things and, because it's really important to the overall culture. We are committed to a Thanksgiving rally. We're committed to doing a dance in, in the winter, you know, winter ball. Do I enjoy going to a dance? No, I do not. But I know how important it is to, to the kids and to, to that culture of being connected as a school. So we're going to do it. And I'm excited about that with pool testing and how we get that done, or safety checks. So you can, you can, I think, go to the last slide, Mr. Thompson, which, you know, just gives a little bit of a more detailed look at how our school-wide goals, so these are, every department has that instructional focus goal. They might have it worded differently because science, it looks a little bit different how they implement it and how they're capturing the data and how they're using evidence than it, than it does in the arts, than it does in English, than it does in math. But, but I can assure you, every one of those goals is reflected in that overall school-wide instructional focus. And then with attendance and those sense of belonging, it's just kind of, again, how do we rebuild the structures and relationships that have been the hallmark, I think, of the positives related to Pittsburgh High? And, and, you know, we have our work to do. This is an unusual year and, and we're facing challenges, I think, like a lot of schools, but, but we're, we're working towards the positive outcomes that we know will be, will, we will have for our kids and, and just continuing to do that. So I welcome any questions. I try to keep it succinct. I know there's a long, a lot on the agenda and I don't want to take away from that, but please, any questions that you have or comments, glad to, to try to address.
How, how are getting substitutes going? Like, do you struggle with that on a daily basis or?
Yes, we do. It's, it's been, it's been very challenging there. We have some creative ideas that I think we're working on right now that I'm hopeful for, you know, because I, I know, you know, so we're part of the Midland-Watch Uset League and that's 26 schools. And I've been the secretary for the Principals Association for that, for that group for about a year. Also part of the Urban Principals Committee. And I can tell you, when I, when I communicate with those two groups, it is the same story. It is a struggle across, and it doesn't matter the community, it doesn't matter even the region, you know, because the urban ones are all over the state. It is, it's a challenge. So I think we've been trying to have, because we've had our postings up for, for probably a year, you know, over and over again, we're just re-advertising and I just, I check on it every other day, zero. I've been sending it out to parents every week, you know, we trying to get the word out, but I think we're also trying to be creative too and looking at some ways that, you know, might address some of the, some of the substitute issues because that, you know, when we have to have classes in the cafeteria, that's not ideal, you know? And I will say, we've been able to fill, to hire some, some great people actually for some of those positions that we had open for a while. And our health person started today, that's great. You know, we had a couple of people start about two weeks ago, awesome. We're, we're looking at an English person starting as well. So, so those pieces, I think, you know, when we can, if we, if we're able to address some of the subbing topics, because, you know, I think like, like all of us, we're still in the pandemic. You know, like I said about the attendance issue, we know we're entering into this, this, I mean, I wore a sweater when I came in today, you know? So it's getting chilly and you know that kind of time of season is coming when people have colds and they have actual flu or they have other things that mimic COVID or whatever. So, so we know we're going to have those challenges of people that are out those days and kids that are out. So, so we want to make sure that we have a structure. So I think, you know, we had some initial meetings last week to try to come up with something and I think there's, there's a sense of, of working together and optimism around that. So hopefully we can report out a positive outcome soon.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for the time and, you know, as always, just reach out, any questions at all, always. Thanks a lot. Have a great day.
Have a great night.
Thanks, Jeremy.
You too.
Okay, we only, we had, only had two presentations tonight under my update report. We have a few budget items. Mr. Shalfo?
Yeah, we have a donation to be accepted. This is from the parchment LLC to Mr. Roach at Pittsburgh High School, $640 to be used for his student activity funds. We have a grant to be submitted. This is what Principal Curry had referred to, the $35,000 Mass Grad Grant, to provide supplemental support for students at risk. We have a grant to be accepted, the Bar Foundation Driving Towards Diversity in Education, Educated Workforce of $25,000. That's a competitive opportunity to participate in the Bar Foundation with the New Teacher Project in efforts to create a more diverse workforce. And then finally, on, for grants, we have an invitation into the Massachusetts School Building Authority's Accelerated Repair Program for Long Joe Middle School for New Windows. We have a letter into the City Council for funding for schematic design and feasibility studies. So once those two portions are completed, then we will be fully, hopefully fully accepted into the Accelerated Repair Project for next year. And then finally, we have one last item before the council this evening. We did speak of this, it's the 10 sick days for our permanent building subs. We spoke of it at last meeting, but we did not have it up for an actual vote. So it is in front of you this evening for, for vote for approval.
What is the committee's pleasure action items? 21-107. Do we want to bundle?
Make a motion to bundle.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you please hold out 21-109?
Okay. 21-107, up through and including 21-111, excluding 21-109. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to accept those cited?
Make a motion to accept.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded to accept, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Now, 21-109.
Make a motion to accept 21-109.
Speaking on the motion.
I, I again decline that. I don't like the long-term, I don't think there's been a full discussion of the words that we use and how we use them and the effect that they have in the community and... that we use and how we use them and the effect that they have in the community and the separation of the effect in the community and the educational world. And I think there's just a whole world of miscon, possibility of misconceptions that could be greatly improved. So I will not be voting to accept the Bar Foundation grant.
All right. Thank you. Motion made to accept 21-109.
Need a second?
Seconded.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Show of hands, please. Thank you. And one in opposition. Thank you.
I believe that's it, except for executive session. That's it, except for the executive session.
We did this, MSBA?
Yeah, but you bundled everything, right?
We did. Okay. All right, good. We will be going into executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to executive session, only to return to adjourn.
To return to adjourn the meeting. Motion was made and seconded, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed is unanimous. We are now, we have a motion to go into executive session. That's been made. We are now... Oh, we need a roll call. That's right. Ms. Greenlee's.
Mayor Dean Atali?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Gregan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. We...
Are we live or is...
Well, we need to... You want to speak? Is he all set to go?